Good evening, everyone. We're going to be starting shortly. Hey, Russ.
Good, EJ.
Good. How about yourself?
Pretty good.
We're just, we're just waiting to start on a couple of supervisors.
Hi, Russ. Are we on?
Yeah, don't worry.
We are live right now, yes.
Oh, okay. I'll wait for Susan and then we can get started with the board meeting.
I forwarded you an email, EJ. Just take a look at it. Thanks.
Got it.
Fred, are you ready?
He's muted, sorry. He's self muted.
Okay. Fred, can you hear me? Oh, he's on the phone. Okay, is everyone ready? Okay, I'd like to start our September 2020 meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, EJ, would you like to give an overview of the virtual meeting protocols?
Sure, thank you. Yes, good evening to everybody. This is a public meeting. It's being recorded. We cannot see, and anyone from the public who is attending, we cannot see you or hear you. You should be able to see us and hear us. Public participation is permitted throughout the meeting. We ask that if you have any comments or questions that you submit them in writing through the GoToWebinar platform using the question feature. So as we go through the agenda and motions are being made, we'll wait a few seconds prior to a vote for any public comment, but we would request that you don't wait. If you have a comment or a question on a specific agenda item, submit that now and we will, we will read and address it at the appropriate time instead of waiting until we get to that agenda item. And then any comments or questions on non-agenda items will be addressed at the end of the meeting under General Public Comment. Thank you.
Okay. There's one other item that I wanted to say about meeting protocols. I did speak with EJ this afternoon for, this is for our board members. He and Madeline were having difficulties hearing who made motions and who seconded motions and who voted on specific items and how. So after I do that, I'm going to announce who made, who made the motion. I'm going to announce who made the second, and then I'm going to do a roll call for the votes. Then that way we can make sure that everything is clear and everyone knows what is, who's voting on what and how and all that kind of good stuff. So. Moving on here, our consent agenda acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for August 12, 2020, and the business meeting, August 2020 workshop meeting, acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of August 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Madeline, I made that motion and Mark seconded it. And are there any comments or questions? No? Fred, how do you vote?
He's still muted.
Is he still muted?
Fred, you're self muted.
Susan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fred, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself, please?
You can vote with a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Okay. Fred, you can vote with a thumbs up or a thumbs down. We can't hear you, Fred.
Was that enough to carry us? Could we move on since we have four out of five or?
Yes, as long as it's marked four out of five means it passes.
Okay, all right, so it's been approved. Okay, the Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending August 31, 2020. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madeline, I made that motion and Bob Cooney seconded it. Any discussion? EJ?
Yes. The general fund balance as of August 31st was $4,363,876, which actually was an increase over last month of about 141,000. This time of year, we don't normally expect to see an increase. Usually our spending exceeds our income this time of year. So that was a, we had a pretty good month. In comparing our general fund balance to the same point last year, we have about 570,000 more this year as compared to the end of August last year. All other, all seven other funds increased for the month of August as well. As of the end of August, we've received about 63% of our budgeted revenue and we've spent about 41% of our budgeted expenditures. Our earned, our real estate taxes, we are at a little over 97% of our total budget of collected real estate taxes, which is ahead of where we were at the same point last year. We're also at 95% of the real estate transfer tax for this year, which well surpasses where we were last year and, you know, puts us on track to exceed that budget, which is great and unexpected. And our earned income tax, which I've been given an update on every month, we actually lapsed last year over the month of August. So we had another strong month with the earned income tax and we're about $73,000 ahead of where we were last year with the earned income tax. So we've been tracking a little behind all year. We're now, after August, tracking ahead, on track to hit our budget and possibly even exceed our budget for earned income tax. So that's, that's pretty good news. Overall budget's in good shape, nothing out of the ordinary, and the bills are good, a little, little bit lighter on the bills this month, which is good and recommend approval to pay them.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bob? And I say a yes too. So that motion passes. Our two-minute reports for our board liaisons. Does anyone have any two-minute reports?
Regarding historicals, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to stop by Valley Park and Martha, you might cover this later, but thanks to Jim Morrison and EJ and everybody. Martha, the team, the railroad or the track display is near complete. The tracks are down and all but four of the, the other four spikes here. So they'll be going in shortly and it looks really nice. So I just want to, historical perspective, it's neat to capture that little snippet of what went down 110 years ago.
Yeah, it does. It looks really nice. And yes, I was going to mention that, but I'm glad you did too, Bob. So Susan, do you have anything or Mark?
I do not, thank you.
Nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing either. EJ?
I only have two things, surprisingly. One is that the first long-awaited meeting of the TFAK, the Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committee, is scheduled for September 24th at 7:00 PM. And that will be held virtually through using GoToMeeting, same as all of our meetings. The only other thing, just to give a follow-up from an update I gave at last month's meeting after the damage to township roads from the tropical storm on August 4th. As I mentioned at the last meeting, a portion of Jug Hollow Road had to be completely rebuilt. The total cost of that came in a little under $27,000, which is below what we expected it to be. And that, then that was paid out of the Capital Roads Fund, which if you recall, our road, our road program for this year was something like $150,000 under budget. So still going to be well under budget. The guys did a really, really nice job on the emergency repair. They got that, they got about a 50-foot section of that road rebuilt in about three days. So and that should complete any, any cost that we incurred for that storm. That should be the extent of it.
Is that, um, repair completed now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then the only other thing, Martha, if you want to mention the executive session, I don't know if we've mentioned that at the top or not, that we had one. I don't think we mentioned that yet.
We, we didn't mention it.
No.
Please do.
I'm lost.
Just mute. We.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. You're right. I totally forgot about mentioning that. Yes, we did have an executive session this evening. Before our meeting, it started at 6:30 and we discussed potential litigation and personnel issues. Sorry about that.
We have one on August 20th as well.
Yes, we did. Okay. More discussion items, old business update, COVID-19 Township Operations and Protocols, EJ?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick update. The township has put in place a travel quarantine policy consistent with the requirements of the state and the CDC for all township employees traveling to any high-risk states. On August 31st, which was Monday of this week, Governor Wolf extended the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration for another 90 days, which means that all directives, authorized actions, and provisions of the original March 6 proclamation are, remain in full force and effect. That includes our ability to meet virtually, our ability to track any COVID-19-related expenses incurred by the township and to submit for FEMA reimbursement once the emergency declaration is lifted, which, you know, at this point, we're probably looking well into next year before we even start considering that. But that, so that's been extended for 90 days, which puts it at the end of November. We do anticipate that all township meetings, board committees, commission meetings will, will remain virtual at least through the end of the year. And at this point, unless the board feels otherwise, my, my thoughts and recommendations, consistent with conversations with other municipalities, is that as long as we're continuing to hold all of our meetings fully virtually due to, due to health and safety concerns, I think that the township building should remain officially closed for that same period of time. And we'll continue to operate the way we have been basically until further notice.
Okay, and I just wanted to add something to that. I did have a conversation with Officer Hennessy, who is in charge of our Police Association activities. And he is, there are a number of their activities that they're just not going to be able to do this year. For example, the teddy bears that they do, hospitals are not accepting them. A lot of the organizations that they deal with for the coat drive, they're not accepting any coats this year. However, he did ask if the board would mind if they could put a plastic, like Rubbermaid container outside for their food drive. And they said they would empty it every evening. I said that I would discuss it with the board. I didn't feel that you guys would say, absolutely not, we can't do that. But I told him that I would discuss it with you guys to see if you would be okay with them putting a Rubbermaid container outside as long as they cleaned it or brought it inside every evening for people to drop off food items.
I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah, I think so too.
Agreed.
Okay, okay. So I will let him know that. I, under my announcements, I will be making another announcement of an activity that they will be doing, but I won't bring that up right now. But it was one of the things, because it was COVID-related, but I wanted to relay to the rest of the board. So, okay, moving on, discussion, Valley Park, next steps. Consideration of Approval. You know, I can't read this. It's really small.
Of Germican style.
Okay, Germican Style Incorporated, quote, "for hazardous oak tree removal in the amount of $5,950 to be paid from the Township Open Space Funds as allowed by Act 115 of 2013." There's a big gigantic huge oak tree that is right next to the cemetery, the Anderson Cemetery, and it is dead. The bark is falling off of it and it really needs to be removed before it falls over and destroys things and costs us even more money. So that is why this is on here. I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Is there any discussion? No? EJ, is there any public comment?
No, not on this matter.
Okay, all right. So there's been a motion and Fred has seconded it. Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Bob? Bob, you need to have your microphone on. We can't hear you.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I say yes too. So that motion passes. And Madeline, thank you for making the screen bigger so I can read it.
Martha, could I add one thing after that? Dealing, dealing with, dealing with Valley Park and trees, the same, the same arborist also submitted, as they were at Valley Park, we asked them to look at the rest of the trees along the trail and just asked them to throw a proposal together just for our consideration. We're coming up on our budget season and we'll be discussing some potential maintenance items for Valley Park. And they did provide a proposal, which basically includes two items. One is basically like a pruning along the entire paved walking trail, trimming trees and pruning trees. And then also they identified 11 trees that they said should be removed. And so the total cost of that was just under 25,000. So, so obviously that's a budget discussion. And that would also be something that would need to go out to bid. But just wanted to make you all aware of that, that if we decide we want to look at that type of tree maintenance, it gives you an idea of the, of the price range that we're looking at.
If, if you don't cut the trees down, is that going to jeopardize the participation in the park?
Sure, there's, I mean, there's, there's definitely a safety concern with some of the trees that are close to the trail. And so it is something that I plan on, you know, having the discussion with during the budget workshops. And again, you know, we, we could budget general fund, we could budget open space fund. This, this would certainly fall into that maintenance, that maintenance category. Just wanted to make you all aware of that. And we also got a quote, as, as we discussed last month, for the trees at the Pickering Preserve that need to come down in the ballpark of $14,000 to $15,000. So that'll be another discussion for, for our budget workshop. So we'll have some decisions to make for next year's budget when it comes to, you know, maintaining or removing dead and potentially dangerous trees.
Why don't you make up a sheet then by Nick for all the number of trees that need to come down within the township perimeters?
Yeah.
So we have, so we have a total amount, so we don't have to vote separately. We can vote on an entire amount of where the trees are and such.
You know, Fred, I think that's a really great idea. But I think the reason why this one particular tree was voted on separately was because it required special equipment and Nick asked for it to be separated out. So.
No, no problem. Thanks.
It's a crane and all that kind of good stuff. But no, I think you're right. I think it's a good idea to get all that stuff put together. So. Okay, so some of the, the next steps that are happening with Valley Park. Yes, Bob, you're absolutely right. The trolley tracks are in and everyone can see up on the screen the pictures for that. We, we received the documentation for the signs and I forwarded those on to EJ and Madeline. And it's my understanding that they are at the printers. So we're waiting on that. And Bob, I think Caitlin is working on the other three, the content for the other three signs. And as soon as we get that from her, we'll get those printed out. And I will put those in the signs as soon as we get them. And next Wednesday, EJ, Nick, Mary Ellen, and I will be at Valley Park to wander through the wooded area and try to come up with a nice natural trail loop and try to monkey our way through all of those trees that fell down. So that's my project.
I mean, I'd be happy to go out and trim some things in front of you so you can get through if you'd like.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll be supervising. I'll be standing back and just watch.
That's my job. EJ, that's my job.
Martha and I did walk through it a while back, but we didn't have the property really marked yet. So now that we know a little bit better where some of those angles are, I'm sure you have an idea of what to do. And I'd be happy to stop by with my snips and clear the path if you point the way.
I think it's going to need more than snips and that's exactly why, why Nick's going to be there. So. But yes, I'm, we're going to be there next Wednesday and I hope by next month I'll have a more full report on our natural trail loop. So. Okay, does anybody have any questions or any concerns about Valley Park at the moment? Okay, EJ, did you have anything you wanted to follow up with, with the Conservation District?
Um, no, not really.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was any updates with that or not. Okay, Consideration of Approval to Advertise the Equipment, the Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Bids for 2020-2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
You have it.
Okay, so Madeline, I made that motion. Fred seconded it. Board, do we have any discussion? No? EJ, do we have any public comment?
Not on this item.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second and there's been no discussion because no one has anything to discuss. So Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan? Mark?
Hi.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Okay, Update, the DCED Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant Award. Consideration of Acceptance of the DCED Grant Award in the Amount of $300,000. I'll make that motion. Do I, okay. And Fred has seconded it. Okay. So EJ and Russ, I certainly hope that the two of you have some discussion here before we vote on this.
Certainly. I'll start, Russ, and then I'll, I'll, I'll tag you in when, when, when necessary. So we applied for this grant back in December. We, the original request was, I think, 391,000. We were just informed last week that we were awarded 300,000 towards this project, which in a nutshell entails installing a storm sewer system in Paul Lehman Drive, basically from the top down to the bottom. Currently, there's no such sewer system on Paul Lehman and what has happened is kind of like a natural ravine or canyon has formed through private property where the water has kind of taken, you know, the most direct path from, from the top to the bottom. And it is, if you've never been up there, in some places, you know, 15, 20 feet deep. It's massive and it, you know, it's, there's a major flooding concern up there. It's done damage to private property. And then from the township perspective, at the lower end, which on the visual is shown towards the top where it says area of culvert replacement, that's the lower end of the road. And, and the flooding is getting so bad that it's starting to undermine the road, which is part of the, you know, the township's investment. We're responsible for the road. So the goals for this project are to alleviate some of the flooding on private property, also to save the township road and to provide adequate drainage, while bearing in mind that this, this is part of the mountain where, where there exists a multitude of drainage issues and stormwater and flooding issues. This is one piece of the puzzle. All of these improvements are very, will be very expensive. So this is, this is not a panacea. This is not a magic pill that's going to solve all of the flooding, but it's a really good first step. And $300,000 from a really competitive grant program is a great, a great way to get us started. From an engineering perspective, no design has been done on this yet because that wasn't required as part of the grant. So if the board, if the board, you know, chooses to accept this, which I would recommend that you do, that would really be the next step, would be for T and M to get started on the design. And with that, Russ, anything you wanted to add or discuss?
Yeah, I think, you know, when you look at the plan in front of you, it kind of looks like a benign type of stormwater layout. But, you know, I think everybody here knows that that is a very challenging area. The topography is very challenging. The topography is very challenging. And the other part is, you get a grant, you want to make a difference, and you want to make sure the residents see a difference when those improvements are done. That's going to be very challenging. I mean, we've gone out there and we've looked at the field conditions. It's going to be a complex type of project. And I think that one caution, we like to proceed kind of cautiously with these projects, because understandably so, there's, these are concepts that are put together due to pricing. And then as we get into detailed design construction plans, it obviously influences what the pricing is going to be. So, you know, we'll put together a proposal to use. And then part of that proposal, we'll take step by step, about step by step discussions with the board to show you how we're coming along with the design and how it reflects in the overall construction budget. You know, as to how we proceed and what we'll be able to do out there. So I think that's the key point. You just have to kind of proceed with caution on the design because you have a budget and you want to live within the budget. And we kind of recognize that this is going to be, you know, a complex project.
Okay.
I have a question, Russ. Yeah. Years ago, I was talking to one of the homeowners up there, because actually when I was campaigning, so it would have been three years ago at that time. And from Oakwood Lane paralleling Paulings, coming up the hill, I remember seeing a gorge. Will this actually help the land that's to the left, or I'll say to the west of Paul Lehman? I guess you probably have to really dig into that to find out. But I thought there was also a ravine cutting straight down to Oakwood through the neighbors' yards and paralleling Pauling. Sorry, not from Oakwood, from Forge Mountain at the top. It's not called out on that map. Yeah, from Forge Mountain going straight down and bypassing Paul Lehman altogether. Is that part of this, EJ?
I think that's the ravine that I was discussing. Is that not, Russ?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That's the ravine. You know, Bob, we have to kind of look at that to see if we put that inlet system in Paul Lehman, will divert some of the water away from that ravine and then help the erosion situation there to some degree? I mean, that's something we got to look into. And I think, you know, it's on private, but I think that ravine's going to be a part of the discussion as we go through this process.
So then you might actually look at something along Forge Mountain to help channel that water down to your piping at Paul Lehman. Is that correct?
Yeah, and once again, we want to kind of take an overall view of this thing, which would include Forge Mountain. And once again, we want to try, we're going to be working within the parameters of the grant. The grant does allow you, in this case, because we've got a little less money, allow you to kind of shrink things. And then maybe over time, you look at this is going to be a phase project, with this possibly being a first phase of a little bit larger project, so we can address some of the concerns of.
Ross, a question. The, will this fit into all the new MS4 requirements that the state is putting the requirements on us? Will this grant be compelled with that?
Well, it, you know, the MS4 is really a function of addressing water quality needs. I think this project is more geared towards controlling water quantity, but in the way the grant was written, I think it's important that anything we can do to divert water away from that natural ravine drainage channel prevents erosion in that, accelerated erosion in that channel, and does address the MS4 concerns. Because one of the, obviously, one of the concerns is sedimentation, controlling sedimentation from MS4, and whatever we can do to decrease that when we do these projects.
Got it, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Russ, I actually do have, I don't know if it's more of a comment or a question, because we did not get the full amount that we have requested. Are there any other grant opportunities that you are aware of that may fit with this project?
We talked to EJ, and we're going to certainly explore those. I mean, these grants come up on a time basis. So once again, maybe next year, we apply for this grant or even other grants that we can take a look at too. So we're going to make that part of our process.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. Okay, so are there any more questions? EJ, is there any comments or questions from the public?
No, there's not.
Okay. So Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's passed unanimously.
Thank you. Martha, I will follow up with you because there's some documentation that we have to sign.
Yeah, we both have to sign that. And I think that email that we received, you told me to ignore that, the electronic signature for that, or no?
No, I told you not to ignore it. I told you not to delete it.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you told me to ignore it. I didn't delete it, but, okay.
Well, I told you don't do anything with it yet, because we needed board approval, but to not delete it, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. So we'll talk. Okay.
Yes.
Consideration of approval to participate in the multi-municipal Chester County Vision Partnership Clean Energy Planning Grant application. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this? Does anyone have any comments?
I think we all received the energy transition plans from Jonathan, and I hope you've had time to read through those. I think they were what you're looking for, so. Do you have any other, do you have any questions?
No, I think, I think some of them were a bit old and a bit vague, but I think there were some others that were actually really good. And even in some of them, I think they were a bit vague, but I think they were vague to the point that we could potentially make it very specific for our municipality. I think this could be something that we should seriously consider. I think the $5,700 that we would put toward this, I think we could easily make back
Yeah.
Nearly.
Yeah, on energy savings and everything else that we have through these audits and through future planning for energy changes in the way that energy is produced. So that's, those were a lot of very helpful documents, and thank you to the PACEA team for sending those over.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was very helpful to actually see, you know, what the document would look like and what we could potentially get out of it. So I thought it was very helpful. I don't know how anyone else felt about that, so. Does anybody else have any other comments? No? EJ, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. This comment came in from David Lutzker, 243 Morgan Street in Phoenixville. On the topic of the Vision Partnership Clean Energy Planning Grant, I am commenting as the president of the Phoenixville Green Team and a member of the PACEA, the Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance. I want to be clear that I do not represent the municipal government of the borough of Phoenixville in any capacity. However, from my conversations with several borough council members and based on actions already taken, Phoenixville is 100% behind the transition to renewable energy. The VPP grant may not be the vehicle that they prefer, but they have stated on the record that they see themselves as leaders in the transition to clean energy and point to the various projects that have already been completed and those that are still in progress. From replacing all the streetlights to LEDs and realizing the financial savings to the SOMAX project, which is an ongoing project to replace the wastewater treatment plant with a carbon-neutral solution to solid waste, eliminating the need to... That comment got cut off. I apologize. And then the last, the last section says, "Phoenixville will continue to play an active role in regional projects related to clean energy. In addition, I have presented to the Phoenixville Area School District Finance Committee, and it was discussed at a recent school board workshop and was well-received in general, and I expect them to fully support and engage with this project."
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, EJ. No more, there are no other comments then?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Moving on. Consideration of approval to advertise the 2021 budget workshops for October 15th and, if required, October 29th, 2020. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, so I made that motion, and Madeline, Fred seconded it. And EJ, do you care to comment on this, since you're the one that's going to be preparing our budget for us?
Yeah, it's pretty, the October 15th date is our regularly scheduled workshop meeting, so that kind of follows what we did last year using the October workshop as our budget workshop. Last year, we only needed one workshop. The year before, I think we needed two. So it's always good, since we have to pay for the advertising anyways, to schedule a second one just in case, because it's free to cancel, but it's not free to schedule more if we need to. So I anticipate having a draft budget together for you for October 15th, and that'll be pretty much the sole focus of that workshop meeting.
Okay, sounds good. So a motion has been made, and it's been seconded. Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan? Mark?
Hi.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Okay.
I have, I have an additional item. Sorry, it's in addition to our approval of the partnership grant. We also have to appoint a member from the board to act as a representative, and we also need to appoint a second task force member. It could be somebody from our EAC. And that is for inclusion on the VPP grant application. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up right away.
No, I apologize.
And I should have, and I, and I received an email from EJ about it, so. It says, "One supervisor and one EAC member to represent the township."
That's what East Pike Glen did. I don't know if it necessarily has to be an EAC member, does it, Mark?
No, it can be, it could be the township manager, but.
I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable appointing someone unless we've already talked to them about it.
Did you tell me, Martha, Steve was interested, or no?
Steve had, at our last EAC meeting, said that he was interested in becoming part of our EAC's Energy Planning Committee. But I don't know that he would be interested in this, and I don't want to appoint someone for this. Does this have to happen as part of the grant?
As I understood it, it has to, it has to occur as part of the application to the grant. We have to, we have to have people named on it.
All right, so if we, what if we name somebody and then next month they, we change it? Is that a problem?
I don't think so. I think if, I think if Jonathan's available, if he's in attendance, we could ask him about that real quick. Do we have a?
Um, I don't. He is on.
He's, he's, he just sent me a text message and said that he would be happy to volunteer. It does not have to be decided tonight. It just needs to be on the application. So the application's on the 25th. We would have to vote on it tonight.
It sounds like Jonathan's okay doing it, so he would be agreeable?
Okay, well, then we got one.
Yeah.
So then we have him. So who on the board wants to be part of this?
Well, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. All right. So I will make the motion to appoint two representatives, one supervisor, which is Mark Donovan, and one EAC member, which is Jonathan Myers, to represent the township on the Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance Oversight Board. I made that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to, we have to do the roll call here. So Madeline, I made that motion. Susan seconded it. Fred?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
And I said yes too, so, okay, all right. I do apologize for that. EJ, you did send that email out to me, and that was.
Well, Mark emailed it to me as well before the meeting, so I forgot as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's okay.
It's all good. We got it done.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so moving on, discussion. The Schuylkill Township Police Department, the COVID-19 Travel Restriction Standard Operating Procedure, the SOP. The approval ratification of the Schuylkill Township Police Department COVID-19 Travel Restriction SOP. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, so Madeline, I made that motion, and Fred seconded it. EJ, would you like to discuss this?
This, I kind of mentioned it briefly earlier. This policy was put in place for the non-uniform employees. Basically, it implements a mandatory 14-day quarantine prohibition from returning to work for any township employees, in this case specifically the police department, who travel to any of the states that are listed on the PA Department of Health's high-risk state list, which, as you all know, is a very fluid list. States have been added, states have been taken off. So the specific states themselves are not named in the policy, since it's a kind of a moving target, but the PA Health Department's list is referenced. So any employee who travels to those states will have to abide by the 14-day quarantine upon their return, which is consistent with the state recommendations.
Okay. All right, does the board have any comments or questions? No? EJ, does Chief have any comments that he wants to say? Do you know?
I don't think so, but I can, I can turn his, I can try to turn his mic on just to double-check. I don't know if that works, if he, oh, he just texted me. He said, "No, I'm good."
Okay, that's perfect. All right. So there's been a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Fred?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Fred, or I'm sorry, Bob?
Hi.
And I vote yes too, so it passes unanimously. Resolutions and ordinances. Discussion, Ordinance 2020-05, the conservation of woodlands and other vegetation are tree ordinance. EJ?
Yeah, I don't really have anything on this. We haven't gotten the comments back yet from Chester County Planning Commission. They're still within their 30 days. If you recall, our August meeting got postponed a week due to the storms, so this wasn't sent to the county until August 13th. So they're still within their 30 days. We haven't gotten comments back yet.
Okay.
When we receive comments, can you forward those to the Planning Commission if it's before their meeting?
Yes, yes, thank you for the reminder. So I don't have anything else.
Okay, okay. We have nothing under subdivision and land development. Additional business. If I recall correctly, we had something, Bob Cooney, I think you had something you wanted to put under additional business?
I do. I was reading through the permission that we gave to the suburban archers for the Pickering Preserve, archery hunting, and I have some concerns. The YMCA has always functioned as daycare, but I think this year with COVID, they're operating also as a makeshift school for parents that... operating also as a makeshift school for parents that can't stay home with their kids to, uh, do the virtual schooling online. Based on that, I think, uh, and just for, for good safety measures in general, being as a, operating as a daycare, I think it'd be wise to consider adding a few additional guidelines to that, uh, permission that'll improve the safety. So I have eight bullets here that I think make good, I'll read them off and if we want to discuss one at a time, if you want me to go all the way through, I can. Uh, the first is, and I know this from archery hunting myself, tree stand hunting is always the safest because of trajectory. Uh, if you shoot at an animal at 30 yards and you miss it, the arrow goes straight down to the ground, whereas ground-to-ground hunting can be very dangerous and arrow could travel very far. So the first uh, thing I'd like to put in there is that tree stand hunting only is permitted on the property. No ground-to-ground hunting is permitted. Do we want to discuss each, or should I just go all the way through?
I think you can go all the way. I was gonna say, go all the way through and then if we do have discussions, we may interrupt you. How's that?
Okay, that sounds good. The second thing, um, a lot of hunters on larger properties will drive deer. They'll push them across the property. That creates a ruckus and when you're gun hunting on a big property in the mountains, that's very common. But it's not safe when you're next to a school, especially right next to Route 29. So I'd like to put in there that no deer drives would be permitted to push deer onto or around the property. This third thing would be no hunting within 150 yards of the YMCA property line at any time. That lends itself to a deer being wounded or an arrow going off track and ricocheting off a tree.
Yards or feet? Uh, was that yours? Thank you.
Yards.
Just, just making sure it was right, thank you.
And just so you know, the, the game commission does have a longer distance from a daycare or school and I think graveyard. I'm not exactly sure what that distance is. It's probably above and beyond that a little bit, but it's, I think it's prudent based on the location of the property. Uh, the school operates during weekdays primarily, so I, I know in the past, uh, the agreement was only hunt on Saturdays and holidays. I think that's a, a good idea to stay with kids. Uh, deer hunting only, it doesn't say anything in there about not being able to, to hunt, uh, waterfowl, you know, raccoons, foxes. I don't think we have a problem with them, so I don't, I don't think we should. I think we should clarify that it's deer hunting only.
Okay, I just want to say, is that number four, only hunting Saturday and holidays, deer only?
Uh, yeah, I've got tree stand hunting only, no driving, no driving. No hunting within 150 yards and then the
Right.
And Saturdays and holidays only.
Got that, okay.
Number five would be deer hunting only. This isn't a free-for-all, kill raccoons, foxes and waterfowl, ducks, that sort of thing. The last couple of things, uh, remove all deer entrails. There's nothing in our agreement, uh, that we don't want to see, you know, remains left behind. And that, that includes the arrows, uh, you know, if, if an arrow passes through a deer or a missed shot occurs, um, you know, that arrow has to be found or removed. There's razor blades on it, it's very dangerous. So, removing all entrails, arrows immediately and tree stands and equipment at the end of the year, I think are one lump responsibility that should be included in there. And the last, uh, last two, um, in the old days, we used screw-in steps, but we found damaged trees, especially if you left them in too long. Nowadays, they have strap steps that wrap around the tree and strap on the tree, does no harm to the tree from an environmental impact. So I think that's a good idea. So I, I put in here, no screw-in steps, strap-on steps or climbing sticks are permitted. They don't do any damage to the tree.
Alright, slow down, uh, 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 strap steps only, uh, in tree stands, you said something else, no climbing?
Uh, no, no screw-in steps.
Don't you think, Bob, that, uh, you're, uh, tying some hands in some of the restrictions? Uh, it looks you recommended, I do.
No, Fred, state, state game land. In state game land, you're not allowed to use screw-in steps. It's definitely gonna damage the bark of the tree.
Well, I know you're, I know you're a hunter and I know you do these things, but I, uh, I, I don't want to curtail the people that are doing it either.
Well, if you don't
Bob, I mean, if I
Be discussed.
If I could just interrupt here for a second. Um, I happen to agree with Bob on this one, Fred. We really don't want any permanent damage to any of our trees.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, the, the archery group that's, that's been hunting at the past year, uh, they specifically mentioned that they use the strap steps rather than the, uh, rather than the, um, screw-ins, so they're already complying with that. This is just to make it formal.
Yeah.
And it's just good sense, you know, we're, we're through a tree ordinance, the last thing we want to do is trees get damaged with, uh, with screw-in steps, so I think that was pretty palatable.
And now, Bob, I also would like to say, you know, this is a preserve. So, and we want to try to preserve the vegetation there, so.
And I think most of these are gonna get, realize, yeah, we're not gonna drive deer on that property, we're not gonna screw into the steps and kill the foxes, but it's better to document things, play it safe.
And, and having this policy, having this policy in general for the township, so we have it on hand if we ever have other, um, areas for hunting, that, that could be, uh, a very useful document to have on hand.
Last thing, uh, and this is common sense, but again, good to have documented. In the event that a non-hunter property and is within 150 yards of a hunter on stand, that hunter must cease immediately, put the arrow back in the quip and not continue hunting until the pedestrian or walker is off the property. Again, just common sense, but better safe than sorry.
Yep, I think that's good.
Let me just pipe in here for a second. I, I was thinking about this. I, I'm gonna, I, I think we should not, not call it an agreement. I think we should have, uh, terms of authorization for hunting on township property and say that if the, uh, there's any violation of this, then the authorization will be removed. I don't want to give anybody any, uh, any rights or any contract rights, uh, for anything. I think these should just be our terms for, um,
Okay.
uh, to, to allow the hunting. And, uh, I presume somewhere we require insurance. Is that covered, uh, somewhere else in this or, or what?
Yes, we recall, we already required that and, and received that, but it should be, yeah. The three terms that we already had, we should add to this to more, you know, make it more formal.
Okay, what, and, uh, what are they, EJ? You know offhand or you can call me tomorrow?
Yeah, it's, uh, basically they have to provide us a roster of their membership, uh, a certificate of insurance and a annual harvest report at the conclusion of hunting season.
Okay, and how much is the, is the insurance, uh, the coverage we require?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't know, but I'm guessing it's probably a million dollars, a lot of money.
Alright, I'll put a million in. If that needs to be changed, we'll mark it up, okay?
You know, an umbrella might be a good idea and and most, most operations have a million with a million dollar umbrella for second claim. I don't know if that's needed or not, but that's what I
I can, I can put it in, all they can say is no.
Yeah. So I know what, what some of the larger property owners demand, but we don't, you know, we don't have to do that. And the last thing, and I don't know if, how the group feels about this, but there's a product called a Lifeline now, which is a, an incredible safety feature for the archer themselves. That, I've always insisted, anybody that hunts on any of my operations in Montana or Texas, is that they have a harness on and a tether that attaches to a Lifeline and as you climb the tree, move that tether up with you and there's a ring around the tree at the top, and if you can't break your neck. It saved many lives and prevented injury, so I don't know how the group feels about that. Some groups like it, some don't, but for me, it's, it's mandatory with anybody I hunt with, with any, anyone that comes to either of our operations.
Well, uh, uh, Bob, if that's gonna be a condition, that, that I need more, I need more information on that to describe it.
Yeah, I can text you the language on that, Bill, if the group doesn't mind. We can put that in there, that Lifeline just protects them as well as us or anybody. The last thing you want to find is somebody bottom of a tree. And I've seen it personally save lives.
I need more detail.
Okay. I'll send that over to you, Bill.
Okay, so Bob has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any more discussion? I know we kind of put the motion and the discussion in there together.
Uh, what? Could, could somebody repeat the motion to me?
Sure. Uh, yeah, I can summarize if you'd like. I'll make a motion that we, as Bill said, uh, add conditions into the agreement. Is that what you said, Bill?
Well, I, I don't want to have an agreement. I think that, uh, the, the board should authorize preparation of terms of authorization, uh, for, uh, hunting on township property. And, um, anyone who is given permission to, uh, uh, hunt on our property must comply with these terms or their, um, uh, permission will, will be revoked.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm just not calling it a contract. I don't want to give anybody contract rights just for them to say, well, we didn't breach and therefore, uh, we have a right. These are our terms.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we create these terms, which include, and do I need to, to say it again there, Martha?
I don't think so, we haven't, right.
Okay.
We got it now, we're good.
Alright. So there's been a motion made, it's been seconded. We've kind of mixed in conversation there. Does anybody else have any more conversation or questions?
Or public discussion?
Or is there any public discussion on that, EJ?
No, no, there's not.
Alright. Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Did we have anything else for additional business, EJ?
Uh, yes, you did. Uh, the, uh, discussion of, uh, police vehicle purchase.
Ah, yes, 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 yes. Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve. I'm gonna need help with this, EJ, because I just don't remember.
Yeah.
The 60,000, no.
So, so the budget, so just the, the budget for, for the purchase of a police vehicle, 60,000. We, two proposals. One for kind of like the traditional police, uh, 2020 police interceptor, all-wheel drive, which is basically the Ford Explorer. It's a CoStars vendor and that is for 34,500. That's for the vehicle that does not include all of the outfitting and equipment, which would be a separate price and that normally is between 12 to $15,000, so that would put that, uh, just under 50,000 total. The alternative, which we just got a proposal for today, is for the same vehicle, but in a hybrid model, um, for $3,000 more, so $37,500. Uh, so more, uh, fuel-efficient, more energy efficient. Yeah, the, the urgency with this is that these vehicles have been very hard to come by this year and, um, if, if we wait another month, I mean, I think this vendor only had three or four left, so if we wait till next month, they may not be available anymore.
Okay, so let me revise that, uh, motion. I'd like to make a motion that the board spends $37,500 on the hybrid police vehicle. Do I hear a second?
Yes, as long as it is coming out of the police budget.
Yes.
Yes, yes, it will be. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Fred, uh, EJ, I highly doubt we have any public comment, but just to check.
Uh, no, there is none.
Does Chief have any, um, anything that he wants to add to this?
Um, yes, he just texted me. He said the, uh, the Tahoe, the 2015 Tahoe will be, will be put on municipal bid. Once this vehicle is received and, and that process would, would come back to the board to approve the sale of that once the bidding closes.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Alright. So Fred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Susan? Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Okay. Announcements. Oh, EJ, do we have anything else for additional business before I forget? Cause I've been forgetting an awful lot tonight, I apologize.
No, that's okay. No, 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 um, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay, so I have several announcements here. The Schuylkill Township Municipal Building remains close to the public. Staff is working remotely and responding to emails and telephone messages. The township will be holding virtual township public meetings until further notice and all township public events have been canceled. Information on how to access the meetings is published on the website and via the township's email distribution list prior to each meeting. Our police department may be reached for non-emergency assistance at 610-935-2440. And if it's an emergency, you can dial 911. Pennsylvania's primary election will be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. All voters now have the option to vote by mail. Submit your mail-in or absentee vote application as soon as possible if you wish to use either of these options. Your completed ballot must be received by 8:00 PM on November 3rd. Visit the township's website, residents voting page, or the Chester County Voter Services webpage for more information. Niche.com has come out with its new 2020 rankings of the best places to live in the Philadelphia area. Schuylkill Township received an A-plus ranking as one of the top Philadelphia area communities. Woo-hoo, let's hear for Schuylkill Township. 2020 census, sorry. The 2020 census results affect our community every day. It is the basis for funding for school lunches, plans for roads and support for first responders and families in need. At an 84% response, Schuylkill Township has exceeded its 2010 self-response rate, but our target is 100%. The deadline for completing the census is September 30th. If you have not yet responded, please take five minutes needed to submit this important data. There will be a virtual presentation of the Chester County Fire and EMS Strategic Plan on September 8th and 9th. Information is available on the township website. Because illegal dumping at the township's leaf composting yard, residents' leaf drop-off and compost pickup are now by appointment only. Please call the township office to make your arrangements and note that access will be dependent on the availability of personnel. The township offices will be closed on Monday, September 7th for Labor Day and the Schuylkill Township Police Association will be holding a blood drive at the Calvary Bible Church on September 28th and 29th from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM both nights. Information can be found on the Red Cross website and an announcement will be on the Schuylkill Township Police Facebook page soon. So, does anyone have any other announcements? Okay, do, EJ, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Pending, we have no discussion other than our September workshop meeting. I don't have a date for that offhand. EJ, do you know the date of our workshop meeting?
Can tell you very sure, well, it's two weeks from tomorrow, so the 17th.
The 17th, on September 17th at 6:30.
Right.
Uh, is the proposed burn ordinance draft and the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company. So, um, does anyone have anything else they'd like to say before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, I will make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you everyone. Bye, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks for us.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Bye.
Thanks for us.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody.